I'd like to... I'd need someone to move that we come out of the closed meeting session that we were in. Would someone care to come up with a motion to that effect? Councilor Laverre, would you care to move that we come out of the closed meeting? I move that we close a closed meeting session we were in, seconded by Councilor Zant. All those in favor? Carry then. Directives were given at that time, so let's go on to the next item. Just a tiny comment. Mayor Dejette is not here, and I'm replacing him then, in keeping with the schedule. Mayor Dejette issued a citation, and I apologize, as off representing the city of Rockland at the United Counties of Prescott Russell Conference. Are there any announcements? Councilor Lalonde, next Sunday, the Lions Club in Clarence Creek will be hosting a demolition derby, so welcome to one and all. They're always hosting this event in June of each year every year. This is the very first demolition derby event in this area. Superb then, thank you. Anything else? Question period. Are there any of you in the audience that would care to ask questions or make a comment? You're granted three minutes to address the council. We'll need your name and address. Good evening. I can go in French, you can go in English if you wish to. My name is Monica Segue, and I have a cottage at 2919 on Old Highway 17. Now, it's not my habit to talk about publicly, either publicly or otherwise, about my flood-related problems, and most of you certainly have heard my story about my flood-related problems during those that attended the flood victims' watch last Monday. I'm not here to repeat or complain, but simply here to ask that the city make prudent and responsible choices to help out those that were victims of flooding. The resolutions that we'll be enacting tonight will help me to make a responsible choice and will help out other flood victims. As you all know, I've signed papers asking for our cottage to be demolished, and I will ask for a zoning provision to have a trailer set on my property. And I would like, though, on behalf of my neighbors and myself, to engage in a legal process or in a process with the provincial government. We need to make a concrete choice. I have a choice, but unfortunately... well, fortunately, I do have a choice. Other neighbors do not have a choice. They need an answer, they need a choice, they need financial help. Now, for those, some of them amongst them, sandbags are not enough. For them, efficient protection measures are possible, such as raising the height of their homes, but others cannot tap into those particular resources or solutions. As far as I'm concerned, I've been victims of floods on three occasions in the past six years, and I don't want Rockland-based residents to be faced with the same dilemmas and problems each and every two years. Flooding can bring about positive consequences, and not only disastrous consequences, and for myself, as far as for the future, things are looking up. For the time being, it's difficult for me, but as I can readily notice, well, I know myself, and I'll go through this experience. I'll live through this, and I'd like to thank council for their patience and their support of us, because it's a difficult time for all flood victims, and I'd like to thank you. That's all I had to say. Thank you. Very touching. There are some measures that we'd like to implement to help out flood victims. We're very appreciative of receiving your comments. Thank you. We need someone else for minutes purposes. We need your name. My name is Roland LaBonté, and I represent my daughter. I just want to know if you have any plans for the ditch that was built beside my daughter's property. Do you have a copy, Mr. Leonard? Yes, we do have plans. We can hand those over to the gentleman if he wishes. Can you send him a new copy of those plans? Yes. I'll come and pick it up tomorrow in Rockland. So you'll go by the town hall? Yes, I have to attend Rockland tomorrow, and I'll pick it up. Do you have an idea as to how long it's going to take you to come up with a copy of those plans? Give them a precise time? Well, I'll contact you to determine when you can come down. If not, it's going to be towards the end of the week, because we're overburdened now with work right now. Can you just exchange the information? Well, you have my phone number. Fine, fine. You know where I live? Fine. 673... is my phone number. 673-5777. And if not there, just leave a message. I might just be outside attending some... doing some chores or something. Any other questions or comments? Fine. Let's go on to item number nine. Item 9.1, Members' Items. Councilor Zant, whereas... The integrated regulation, whereas the safety of people living along the Ouattara River shoreline is of prime importance. Am I reading the proper resolution here? And whereas flooding that occurred in the past few years are abnormal, and whereas climate conditions that precipitated those events were not identical in previous years, be resolved, the town council asked the provincial government as well as the federal government to establish a commission that will look into the conditions that gave rise to those floods in order to come up with the tools that will help us to manage the Ouattara River water basin and be resolved that this commission be set up and implemented as soon as possible to ensure that these events do not occur in the future or reoccur in the future. Fine, seconded by Councilor Bouchard. I'd like to add also that we're close to having a repeat of this situation in about 10 months' time from now. I know that the bureaucracy, not necessarily the bureaucracy that's stemming from the city of Clarence and Rockland, but the bureaucracy in brackets, it's important that the administration... and I know that you understand what I'm saying, because you went through. If we're not able to obtain answers from the city of Ottawa or whomever else would be involved, it might be a good idea that we, at the city of Clarence and Rockland, well, I guess we can host a meeting.
Basically, I'm saying if no one else... if people are going to drag their feet, then I'd like to host it. And let's get the ball rolling and make sure that we have some answers, because I don't want to go through this. Nobody wants to go through this another, you know, in 10 months. And 10 months is really not a long time to put meetings together and get answers, so. Ms. Collier, do you know how long this will take to be written, signed, and where does it go after this? After we decide to put a resolution like that and move it to the provincial and federal?
I will do some research tomorrow, even once you've signed the resolution and the letter. This letter is going to go to the province, and given that some municipalities are still in states of emergency, they're not moving towards looking for resolutions right at this time. I wouldn't see a meeting happening until September.
I guess what we're looking for is why did this happen?
Yeah.
And we all have our thoughts, but I mean, something has to go up the river, literally, and find out how it started, because it's not normal.
Certainly, the sincerity of the province at the meeting that the mayor did attend on establishing the task force. The province has a keen interest in finding the answer to this, if there is an answer, and it's not. All of the factors pulled together, you know, the weather, the snow, whether it is the dams or not. But, you know, we're going to move up to the federal level to get the answers, so I don't see getting an answer in short order.
But let's host if we can.
Yeah, in agreement.
Monsieur Bouchard?
Is sending a copy of this resolution, issuing a flash letter to our MP and MP in Austin.
Well, that's what will happen. That's where it goes.
This is designed to happen as well?
Yes.
Madame Chouagnan?
Wouldn't it be better to have an independent company to assess what happened? Because if it's the government who's at fault, they may...
Yeah, but who pays for it?
Yeah, the government. We should emphasize that they hire the independent company, no?
We can't do it and then send them the bill. Anyways, I see where you're going with that.
I think that, I mean, the task force would be established to have an independent review of the...
Okay.
...regulating board. The initial meeting the mayor went to was to discuss having a task force. They haven't actually set the task force.
Okay.
They're waiting till the states of emergency are over, and then they're going to set the task force.
Okay, perfect.
And we can take some leadership on this. I think the mayor is definitely keen to do that.
Let's go on to the vote. All those in favor? Carry then. Thank you. Item 9.2, Mr. Lalonde, whereas a certain number of residents of the city of Clarence and Rockland are impacted by the floods that occurred this year, and because many of them will have to face important cleanup works and renovation works, be resolved that the administration establish a list of civic addresses of all residents within the limits of Clarence and Rockland that are impacted by the floods, and be also resolved that council mandate the administration to take necessary measures to ensure that those residents that are living in those properties that are impacted, that appear on the list, be exempted from all fees that... who will bring their garbage at the landfill site until the 31st of July 2019, seconded by Councilor Bouchard. Any questions? I just have one question. Could we set that even back even more than the 31st of June? Some basements really have to dry off. I'd like to propose from this point on until the end of the year. Could that be okay? Well, because... well, because of the moisture that's ever-present, it needs to be done in the coming weeks. Well, sometimes it might take a bit of time, because you need to finance these works. Some might do it in phases. If those renovate and have construction waste, they can do so. Well, I think we'd also discussed giving out permits to those homes that are impacted, saying, you know, you have the right to make use of the landfill site right up until the end of the month of September, October. Well, it was a... I'm sorry. It was a motion that had not been voted on. Well, I move. I don't know if someone would care to second. Mr. Leonard? Well, really, I... we might issue a permit that would have the residence's address or something like that, because there's accumulated fatigue, and people have to, you know, get their bearings and remove their sandbags. Well, let me propose the 31st of December. Do we need to vote on this, Mrs. Willet? And make another one? No, you can just move to make an amendment and add the amendment to the original resolution. So I move that this be amended to the 31st of December 2019. Fine, Mr. Laverre, fine. All those that are in favor, carry then. Fine, let's go on now to item 9.3. That's my resolution. Whereas a certain number of residents of the city of Clarence and Rockland are impacted by recent spring floods, be it resolved that council authorizes that the residents of those properties that are impacted by floods be exempted from all fees with regards to demolition purposes, and be also resolved that council mandate the town administration to take a look at potential needs of properties that were impacted by spring floods and to prepare a report, taking a look at options with regards to requests for amendments for zoning bylaws or requests for minor variances or requests for construction permits. Seconded by Councilor Simard. What do you mean by that? What do you mean by the municipality looking, deciding whether the basement or the level of the home will be raised or the basement... well, Mr. Mayor has asked me to replace him with regards to this question. Firstly, we'll remove all fees for demolition purposes. Those who want to raise the level of their cottage, we won't. We'll remove all permit fees. If people finish their basement and raise the level of their homes, well, of course, we can't look into this or verify this five or six months later on, but I believe that generally speaking, that's the spirit of the resolution, is this? No, I believe that you're quite right. We'll come up with a report concerning or defining the policies that have been defined grossly today or generally speaking, and looking into specifics of individual cases and following that, we'll be able to look into demolition and construction and the relationship with regards to elevation of some property levels and so on and so forth. So, and after that, any fees that are associated with this, and then at that point in time, you'll be able to decide what you're able to do with this. Councilor Laverre, if I read this resolution properly, we won't be charging for someone who's requesting for an amendment or a variance to a zoning bylaw? Well, I don't think we've decided that per se. I believe that we're unanimously in approval of doing away with any demolition fees. Well, I believe that we heard this lady that asked to be exempt of that. I don't want her to pay out $800 for demolition works to be performed. What we're going to do is we're going to start off with demolition permits, and I believe that the report should be forwarded to us to determine, here are the fees that are involved, and let's go ahead. But your resolution also states request for amendments to zoning bylaws. Yes, this states to be considered with regards to variances to zoning bylaws. Well, you see, at that time, in June, when the report is forwarded to you and it's completed, we'll be recommending what changes with regards to minor variances need to be implemented in light of the situation and all associated costs, and if you have any thoughts on this matter, you can air them out, Mrs. Willet. Just to add with regards to the members' resolution, that the intent is to abolish demolition permit fees. That's quite clear. And secondly, to mandate the department to forward a report that will detail the process that needs to be followed by flood victims that wish to rebuild in the impacted zones. There might be a request that to be considered with regards to minor variances or modifications of zoning bylaws, depending on the nature of the request made to council. Well, they'll come up with reports involving different scenarios, and they'll determine whether or not you wish to consider doing away with fees involved or... Fees with regards to minor variances or zoning bylaws. Fine. All those in favor then? Carry? Thank you. Let's go on now to item 9.4, whereas the Burjet Embellishment Committee calls for the active participation of children and parents to embellish the environment, and whereas the Burjet Embellishment Committee has asked the municipality to install some light sockets along light posts to allow families to put Christmas decorations along the recreational path in between Marsil Road and Champlain Road, and whereas those will be installed in the next two weeks, it would be more economical to do all of the works involved within the next two weeks, that the city of Clarence and Rockland come up with the necessary funds to cover the costs of the installation of light plugs at the maximum of... to a maximum of $2,000. Seconded by Councilor Zant. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't have it on the resolution. Do you have any points or questions to determine? I believe it's... I believe that you told me it would be taken immediately... oh, it would be taken out of the departmental budget? Yes, we haven't looked into this, but I believe the department will be able to fund this with no problem whatsoever. And it's going to cost us much less, a little bit less than half of the costs initially involved, or that would be involved if work would not be conducted in the next few weeks. Let's go on to the vote. Do you want to put into the resolution the financing resource or sourcing? Yes, I believe it's going to be... Okay, so come up then with the necessary funds within the 2019 budget, contingency fees to wit, to fund this project. Mr. Zant still seconds the modification? All those in favor, carry then. Consent item. Are there any members of town council that wish to withdraw certain items? Councilor Lalonde, 10.3A. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to withdraw that, 10.3A. Are there any other items that need to be withdrawn? Fine, let's go on with that tradition, Mr. Laverre. You're always the one that's designated to read those. Be resolved that the following items, as identified under consent items of the regular meeting agenda be adopted. 10.1, adoption of the minutes of the following meetings. Adoption of the minutes of the regular meeting, May 22, 2019, and minutes of the committee of the whole, May 22, 2019. Item 10.2, receipt of the minutes of the following meetings. A, Heritage Advisory Committee of August 21, 2018, and B, the minutes of the Heritage Advisory Committee, May 28, 2019. C, minutes of Committee of Adjustment, March 27, 2019, and D, minutes of Committee of Adjustment, April 24, 2019. And 10.3B, resolution to raise a pride flag during the third week of July. Resolution also to amend a condition of draft approval of Brugil and Stage 5 of Moore's Village. Resolution also, item D, to transfer $21,141 from the federal gas tax funds to the Clarence Creek baseball field construction project. And E, resolution to remove the Clarence Creek server room fire extinguishing system project from the 2019 capital projects list to add a project for improvements to the security system. Item 10.4, resolution to declare the Ottawa River Festival as an event of municipal significance. Seconded by Councilor Simard. All those in favor then? There was an item that was withdrawn. Go ahead. Be resolved that town council authorize installation of a permanent signage on Cordon Street in Rockland to advertise the activities of the Otters Club of Rockland, and be resolved that town council authorize the Otters Club be not charged for fees in the amount of $333. Seconded for discussion purposes. Councilor Zant? Madame Clerk? Well, the resolution that is before us seems adequate, of course, but the change that was brought to the policy states or gives the impression that we're excluding specifically this club for everything that's bilingual in nature. I thought that we wanted to give them the authority to put up a unilingual French signage, but that the announcements appearing on this signage per se would be bilingual, but that's not... that's not reflected. That's not what's reflected on the bylaw. What the resolution does state, that you're allowing signage, unilingual francophone signage there, that means that the signage would be francophone with regards to its greater body and with regards to the modifications to signage by law contents that I've looked into, that I've forwarded to you. However, we have to determine whether or not the intent was to put up a francophone unilingual signage or bilingual. The name, Club Optimist de Rockland, would remain Club Optimist de Rockland, which is a francophone name, and that's fine, which would give it this unilingual signage flavor. But if this particular council does not wish to proceed with that, then we'd have to change the francophone unilingual provision in the proposed bylaw to bilingual. I missed that meeting. What's the Optimist Club intent? Do they wish to only advertise their events in French? Yes, yes, that is what their intent is. Yes, go ahead. You see, what they did was that they addressed the council to the effect, for example, that they would advertise their lobster supper. They would, you know, advertise this in both languages, because it would be to their advantage to obtain more clients than they would advertise bilingually. Well, you know, we were going back and forth with regards to this. I know that during the course of the meeting, you know, we had certain reservations of the Optimist Club, you know, tapping into the resource of this signage only in French. What my understanding was, from what they said to council, was that often they were going to post bilingual signage, but I believe that they wanted to have the versatility or should I say, the latitude to either post both in French and in English. If they wanted to promote a French-related event, they could do so solely in French, and if they wanted to promote an event bilingually, they could do so. I don't think that it was agreed upon with the address council that this signage would be francophone with bilingual contents or content. I don't think that was what was understood. Mr. Laverre, I believe that we leave the resolution as is. The Optimist Club wished to have Le Club Optimist de Rockland left in French on the main body of the sign, and from what they told us, it would be to their advantage to advertise bilingually when they were hosting events. I would leave it as is. Councilor Zant? Well, we discussed this last time around, and I understand what Mr. Lalonde is getting at, and I have a couple of things here in light of all of this. It does not jive. This will be posted on town-related property, and the city of Clarence and Rockland has a resolution saying, yes, that they can operate... some businesses or entities can operate in either language. When Canadian Tire operates, it's a Canadian Tire, that's fine, but we compel Canadian Tire to have bilingual signage on their property. If we do have signage on the premises of the city of Clarence and Rockland, we have to cater to the needs of residents that are both francophone and anglophone. I know it's hard for them to decide upon one language or another, but they do have a bylaw that deals with this. We need to promote something or resort to publicity in both languages, because I guarantee you that this will not be the last organization that will request this provision. Well, the next entity that will ask to advertise only in English, well, look, will come into the same... will face the same problem. We do have obligations. We do have an obligation to ensure that regulations are applied to everyone, everyone, and that they're applied blanketly for all signage within the property. Councilor Laverri, Councilor Chouagnan? Well, one thing that's not all that clear in my mind is this. We asked, are anglophones included? They said our clients are francophone. Our clientele is francophone, but the club, when it was formed, was it a bilingual club? I'm referring to the Optimist Club. I know that in Burjet, often they'll host activities, and they're always hosted in both languages, and even then, they say, you know, Optimist Club or Club Optimist, if they're advertising in English. Is it a choice that this club has made to only cater to the needs of francophones? Or is it that all Optimist Club are francophone? No, only in Rockland? Well, I believe there are other Optimist Club that run in French. Well, Rockland, was that a separate club from the Grand International Movement if they decide to go French only? Councilor Laverre? I know, and I know that the media is in attendance here tonight. I know that it's important for people to understand that council, in particular myself, is not against francophones. It's important to respect a bylaw that was implemented to govern those particular activities. That's the reason why it was enacted. Councilor Laverre? I believe that we add this provision when we're governing also, when governing those events hosted by schools. But schools, you know, are different. Schools are government-run institutions, not municipally-run institutions, and they're not nonprofit institutions. They don't fall within the same category confines to include one club in one resolution, to exclude this particular club specifically, while we're opening the door to many, many things. Well, if I can seize the intent of what everybody's discussing, can we not propose to defer this measure and to ask members to take a look at this? Because it's true that if we... true that if we authorize that this be done on Clarence and Rockland premises, we might run into difficulties. Just to, I would propose that we come up with a meeting, we set up a meeting with one or two individuals that represent the Optimist Club, the mayor, as well as one or two other members of town council to determine what they wish clearly. You know, we're talking about something and they're not in attendance here tonight. I understand the bilingualism issue you're raising and the Clarence and Rockland premises that you're referring, raising too. I believe that Mr. Lallon even had removed this, well, you know, if they asked for signage and then another nonprofit asks for another signage, then we'll wind up with individual signages here, there and everywhere. When we come in to Clarence Creek there with this big metal signage up there advertising different social clubs, but now they have different social clubs that advertise for everyone, on behalf of everyone, that's something I'd be preferable, preferable for, well, I'd, something I'd opt for, especially we're bilingual city here. If we sit down at the table and engage into frank discussions with them, we'll have more time to share our thoughts. Are you in agreement that we defer this proposal? Move by Councilor Lallon then and seconded by Mr. Carrerelli. Are there members that would like to sit down and spend a couple of hours with the members of the Club Optimist, Optimist Club and hash this out? So Mr. Zant and Mr. Grimah? Well, we can write those down in the minutes that we'll, we'll be drafting after tonight's meeting, sure. Mr. Zant and myself, Councilor Laval also is, wishes to attend because it impacts the city front to, to the very maximum and the, our town clerk is putting us, is asking us to come to order. Mrs. Collier, do we have information from the Optimist Club? Yes, could you please contact them and mention them, what transpired here tonight? Fine then, that's fine. Let's go on. Committee reports, 11.1, natural disaster resilience profile project proposal. Would someone care to read this? Be resolved that council authorizes the director of protective services to sign any, well, with working to have the city of Clarence and Rockland become the lead government department of the joint proposal to DRDC to develop and improve the national resilience profile and be it also resolved that council authorizes the director of protective services to sign any related paperwork necessary to submit this project proposal and be it further resolved that subject to the approval of the project proposal to DRDC, council authorizes the administration to hire a term full-time position to oversee the research work and also to better improve disaster and emergency management and resilience for the city of Clarence and Rockland, which shall be fully funded by the grant. Seconded by Councilor Bouchard, do you have any questions or any additional points? Well, I believe it's a very worthwhile initiative, fine. So I look at this
By the grant, because we have to give them $5,000 in prebies, right?
Yeah, it's a timely, like a cash contribution from time, so there's a bit of oversight from our side, so you're going to be, you know, oversight to be charted, like hiring positions and stuff like that. There would be a cash outlay from the municipality.
Okay, and then they're, they're talking about having some funds advanced to them until they get the way I was reading that report there.
Certainly, my inclination and the conversations I've had with them is that's not the way it would work. We would receive the funding from the federal government and once that money comes in, that would then be advanced out of that grant money to this organization that's leading the research piece. So we end up managing the overall grant piece so that the total fund would come to us as the lead government agency and we're then advancing money to the research organization to continue the research. This position that's part of the resolution would then oversee all of that to make sure that they're actually delivering what they said they would deliver.
So after two years and a half, what do we do with the grant?
Well, again, the proposal is that it's a term full-time position to oversee the program. Once the program's done, we shake hands and part ways unless, unless there's a position at that time that council wants to consider.
But since he's full-time, we don't have to buy out or anything like that?
No, it would be a term position, so from the onset of the position would be term for the duration of the project, funded by the project at the end of that, we'd shake hands and
Any other questions?
I thought I was back at work because this is exactly what I do for a living. Grant proposals like this, so just a thought though. There's actual centers that actually exist within universities that do exactly what you're trying to achieve with the group. One of which is the Center for Climate Adaptation at the University of Ottawa. The other one is Municipal Natural Asset Initiative and I could actually put you in contact with, because I have a group at the University of Ottawa who do, who fund projects with these people. So those, those two, especially Municipal Natural Asset Initiative would be, so a group that you would want at the table by asking this, so I could get you in contact with Jeff at the university and he can help you out with that. But that's a, it's really an interesting project and I'm sure I'll have some of my researchers actually applying for the same pot of money that you're looking at.
Yeah, and if you can share those contacts with me, I'd be more than happy, council, to pass them along to the gentleman that's written this grant proposal.
Because managing federal public works funds is not an easy task from experience, so we want to make sure that whoever will be managing that knows what they're up against.
Correct, that's the reason for that position is to look out for that, funded by the grant.
Okay, can go. So is it DRDC that approached you?
No, it's this individual from Jacobs, so through the same university I did my master's program in, he's a fellow graduate at the same program. So he's reached out to me through that connection and this is what he does, is write these grant applications. We're currently doing a similar one on the return on investment for disaster mitigation stuff right now. It's a three-year project that's
If it can help anything with, you know, improving our condition as far as resilience to flooding, I
I don't think it's going to hurt us in any way, we should perform and certainly we spend a benefit.
Anything else?
Would that have a good impact, positive impact on our insurance premiums? Because if we, you know, if we are moving forward and making sure that we are always up to date, then we
Mr. Wilson?
I don't know whether it would impact our insurance premiums, that's sort of the council's question. I think that there's some interesting stuff as natural disasters continue to unfold and as the insurance industry is continuing to pay out premiums for this. I think they're going to be looking for municipalities that are improving their resilience rating, which is part of what this project is trying to look at, is to develop a register of how resilient different communities are. The more resilient you are, the more favorably you would be looked upon by these insurance companies. So I, certainly I don't think it hurts for us to look at these, how we are more resilient to disasters. We've had quite a few in our area in the last of the walk.
And the way the research works is that once your name is out there as a body that's helping research, the word gets out there and other researchers and other universities will come on board and contact us and say, okay, hey, you guys have been involved in X project, are you interested in helping us with? So in that aspect, it could help the city moving forward.
Yep. All right then, thank you very much. 11.2. Councilor Simard, please. Be resolved that municipal council hereby authorizes the community services to submit a grant application, grant application to the Ministry for Seniors and Accessibility Seniors Community Grant Program to help fund the Canada Day celebration activities as part of the 2020 edition of the Clarence Rockland Senior Games. Seconded by Councilor Laval. Any questions or comments? All those in favor then? Carried, 11.3. Yes, that's the addition of a training fire hydrant, is it not? Yes. Be resolved that council hereby authorizes the director of protective services to sign a change order for not more than $25,000 plus HSD in order to reinstate a training fire hydrant for the new fire training grounds adjacent to the new fire station and be it also further resolved that the funding for this training hydrant be taken from the regional training centers 2019 budget. Seconded by, well, that's in budget, Councilor Gaddarini, I thought you'd have a piece of that legislation. Fine, any comments? That stems, that's, we're just tapping into the regional fund for that, so it doesn't cost anything from anyone. Fine. Bylaws, could you please, Councilor Zant, read the bylaws? Fine, so we're on to 12.3. Do we have to propose an amendment to the agenda? Fine. That the committee recommend the adoption of to remove the description of condominium, of the condominiums of 535, 565 and Chenny Road? Are you reading each and every resolution or are you just reading bylaws? Well, that's what I'm right, reading here. No, 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 just, just, oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong place here. I'm in the process of reading individual bylaws, I apologize. I apologize. Be resolved that the following bylaws be adopted. Item 12.1, 2019-50, condominium conversion, 535, 445 Russell Road and Chenny. Item 12.2, bylaw 2019-60, remuneration of council members. Seconded by Councilor Bouchard. All those in favor? Carried then? Confirmatory bylaw then? We have to mention item 12.3, amendments to science bylaw. Mr. Bouchard, if you care to read this, there's no resolution that's attached to it. Maybe move that bylaw 2019-61, that this bylaw be deferred and be dealt with at the same time as the other point that needs to be dealt with. Item 12.3, 2019-61, amendment to science bylaw 2015-160, that this amendment be deferred to the next meeting. Seconded by Councilor Chouagnier. All those in favor? Carried then, thank you. Councilor Zant, confirmatory bylaw. Be resolved that bylaw 2019-59 be deemed a confirmatory bylaw for the regular meeting of the 3rd of June 2019. Seconded by Councilor Gaddarini. All those in favor? Fine, thank you. So meeting is called at an end at 10:56. The next meeting will be at 8 o'clock. I'm sorry, we just adjourned, I said at 10:56, but 7:46. I apologize.